City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Present.
Commissioner Colwell. Commissioner Howington.
Here.
Commissioner Santiago.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harriet.
Present.
Mayor Vila.
Here. This time, we're going to go ahead and start with the invocation and the pledge of the flag. If I can please have Commissioner of District Four, Commissioner Howington, please lead us.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then, I'd like to just have a moment of silence. Everybody may say a silent prayer for all of us to have a good evening and make it through tonight with the best interests of residents at heart.
Okay. There's a request. We're going to go additions, deletions. Seeing none. There is a request to move up Presentations B and, sorry, let me see here. C and B ahead of A. Would there be an issue with? We can do, doesn't matter. Just those two before. Would the Commission be okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started with recognition of the retirement of Fire Chief Bill Snyder.
Please present.
Okay, so let's, if I can have the dais please come to the floor. I believe the city also has... It's just that? Okay. Great. If I can please have Fire Chief come, or former Fire Chief Snyder come up. It feels so weird saying that. And if I can please have everyone's here from the Fire Department to come up as well, along with family members, friends. Yes. Yeah, I said family, family and friends, they're coming. Okay. Can you help me by holding this?
I'm going to hand this to the chief first.
Chief, we appreciate so many years that you've given the city, this community, so much leadership that you've given your firefighters. I know if I were to put Maritza, who's probably had the most relationship with you, which I will give her the mic, don't worry. There's so much I can say. I don't want us to start getting emotional again like the other day, but I would love on behalf of the city and us to give you the key to the city of Deltona. I will tell you that is, that is so minimal to what you've actually given us as a community. And that doesn't even describe how thankful we are as a community to everything you've done for us. I've only given out three in my life of those. I don't just give it out for any reason. They have to mean something. And I would be so foolish to not give you that because you've obviously, you didn't deserve it, you earned that. So, thank you for all you've done for us as a community. Thank you for building up the Deltona Fire Department. And we wish you the best on your retirement and try not to travel too much. Commissioner Vila Vasquez had a courtesy you've known him the longest.
Thank you, Mayor. So I can tell you that key is well-earned. For those of you who don't know, when we have a hurricane and there's lockdown, the city gets locked down, this room becomes our emergency set- The first time I met Chief Schneider, it's very hard to get out of that habit, was when Maria hit the Caribbean Islands, if you remember that. I came to City Hall and I said, "I'm doing a fundraiser and I need to get all the organizations that can help all the people moving into Deltona that were affected by Maria." And they said, "Well, work with Chief Schneider." And we filled up this room with organizations we didn't even know existed. And ever since then, we have been blessed to work together for the community, for the city of Deltona. And even though you retired, we're still going to bug you. I know where you live, I know your wife. We already talked, so you can't hide. Thank you so much for all your service. Thank you to the family for lending him to us, but we're giving him back to you nice and safe, right?
So she's the one that's known you the longest from the dais perspective. I think Emma, Commissioner Santiago, is known you the longest because she's worked for the Fire Department, so.
Chief, we talked already. Thank you so much for your service to the city. You've, I've, you just don't do the Fire Department thing. One of you. I appreciate you for what you've done. Back to school fair, and it just wasn't you, it was your family as well. So, thank you, thank you so much. You've heard my stories. Thank you for signing off on all my travel. I appreciate that, and I only wish you the best. You've deserved it, you worked hard. So congratulations, Chief.
Chief, I want to thank you for all the service you've done for me. I've probably known you the shortest time, I guess. But I really appreciate everything you've done for us, and you'll be well missed. Thank you.
Commissioner Howington.
Thank you for all your service, and I think I have you beat. I've known him less than you. So it's been just a few months, but thank you for all that you've done. You've done so much for our community. And I know that I've heard nothing but wonderful responses about you and your team. So thank you again for everything.
I'm Vice Mayor Harriet.
Chief, thank you very much. Thank you for not only your leadership in the community, but the leadership of the Fire Department. And then, the other night, we thanked you for-
Sacrifice. Without y'all's sacrifice, I could have never done near what I did. I love, I love y'all, and thank you for everything. I got my Fire Department family, thank you. It's been truly an honor to serve with y'all. And just thank you so much. Thanks to the staff, city staff. Thank you for supporting me throughout this process. You know, it's a team that makes things work. Our team here, our team here, our team here, that really make everything work. And thank you for, you know, everything that you've done for me. I want to thank the citizens of the community here that I've worked with many times. A good, positive group of people for the most part that have, you know, just really helped to make things a lot better. And I'm proud to have served this community. And I would like to thank the mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you so much for this. This means more than you can imagine, it really does. And again, I'd just like to thank-
So Chief, we're going to take a picture with you and-
Oh, Chief, sorry. Sorry about that.
All right. Next, Maritza, if you can please come here to the front. I'd like to invite Vima to please come up. So Commissioner Vila Vasquez is being honored, and I'll let, I always call him Groot. I don't know if that's what I'm allowed to call him or not, but he's Captain Harlem. So you've been letting me call you Groot when it was the other guy's name, come on. He's a real tall guy, okay. So I'll let him do the honor, but this is a big honor for obviously a Commissioner to be receiving this. And obviously Commissioner Vila Vasquez does a lot with you guys in the community, so.
Appreciate it. A lot of you guys know me as the Deltona Commander, but got a special treat tonight because the National Commander actually came down from Jacksonville for this honor. So I'm going to pass the mic off to him.
Wow, thank you, I feel special. Now really, it is a special night, as I can see, retiring first responder. What a great occasion for us to show up. Because all these men and women that you see here, that's what Vima's made of, first responders. All of us are either serving the military, retired veteran or active duty, or- And with you. On behalf of Vima, welcome to our family, Commissioner. So, we want to present a little plaque to you. It reads a lot of what we already said. A recognition of your unwavering support and advocacy for our military and first responders. The Veterans Enforcers Motorcycle Association proudly bestows upon you the distinct honor of honorary membership. Your commitment is reflected in our mission, and from this day forward, you will have the loyalty and respect of those who ride for those who saw more. Presented today, Vima riding for those who saw more. Thank you, welcome to the floor. And as the National Commander, we don't take this lightly. We present this to the chapter commander who requested it for you, and we approve it, and we will present it to you. Captain Harlem.
So, Maritza, I remember the first time I came up in here and I asked for support for- Don't make me cry. I asked for support for the memorial ride, and you were the first one to show up to me and let me know that you're, that you had our backs. So, it's a pride and privilege-
Thank you guys so much, appreciate it. Thank you so much. You know, everybody here knows, it's no secret, I am a number one fan of our veterans. And I will do anything and everything within my power to help our veterans get what they deserve and then plus. So, obviously, you know, helping, working with you guys is close and dear to my heart. And I will continue doing so, as well as our firefighters, you know, my families are veterans and firefighters and enforcers in New York City, so this is why it's close to my heart. So I want to thank both of you guys for recognizing me. I didn't do it for this. But I appreciate it, I appreciate it, and thank you.
Always thank you.
So we got one more presentation coming up. Right next, we're going to do the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. Commissioner Santiago.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, September 15th, marks the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month. And I have been honored to have, present the proclamation today. So with that said, I want to invite the Volusia County Hispanic Association to come up front. We have Cassie Landron, the President, Elaine Daniels, Secretary, and Abe Espinoza, our Vice President. City of Deltona proclamation. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mes de la Herencia Hispana, is celebrated nationwide on September 15th through October 15th each year. And whereas, the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded to a month by President Ronald Reagan in 1988, at which it is celebrated today. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month reflects on the history of a people who were part of this land long before the birth of the United States. And whereas, the Hispanics were among the earliest European settlers in the New World, and Hispanics as a people, like their many cultures, share rich history and great diversity. And whereas, Hispanics have had a profound and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work and service. They have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. Now therefore, we, the Mayor and City Commissioners of Deltona, Florida, do here proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month. And call upon public officials, educators, librarians and residents of Deltona to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities and programs under this year's theme, Collective Heritage: Honoring the Past, Inspiring the Future. 2025 Hispanic Heritage Month recipient is of Volusia County Hispanic Association. Thank you.
If you guys don't mind, again, I'm Abe Espinoza, I'm the Vice President for the Volusia County Hispanic Association, just a few minutes. I want to invite everybody. On Saturday, we have our 29th Lightning Festival at Dewey Booster, which should be a great time. We're going to be out there from 11 to 7. Great food, great music, we want to, we want to celebrate our Hispanic culture, so everybody's invited. So it's a free entry, so, see you there.
All right. Oh, no, no, Commissioner, you're supposed to wear that the whole commission meeting. Yeah. Listen, not every city can say that their Commissioner is an enforcer.
That does sound nice, actually.
All right. So we're going to go now to, and I'm sorry if I botcher this name, but Echolos? Okay, Echolos Audit Presentation. If you can just state your name so we can call you by your name.
Is this a Doge presentation?
I believe it is.
So thank you so very much.
If you can just put the mic towards you, there you go.
Thank y'all so very much, and congratulations to the Chief, to the Commissioner. And thanks for having me. By way of background, as y'all might be familiar, I was introduced to the city here and to the work that y'all are doing vis-à-vis audits through the State Doge Initiative. I myself come from the federal Doge team. I'll share a little bit more about my own background, I'll share a little bit more about my own background, but that is sort of by way of introduction here. Really a cutting-edge AI tool for government efficiency, fiscal responsibility, and taxpayer stewardship. So I'll follow this presentation along and share a demo of our product. I'll share a little bit about my own background, get into the product, talk a little bit about our capabilities as a tool, and then a little bit about the terms. So just a little bit about my own background and the background of our team. I grew up in Houston, Texas, went to Princeton, and then maybe the most relevant part of my background is came down here after school to Florida, to Miami, to work at Citadel, the hedge fund, in the office of the CEO, working for Ken Griffin, who's now one of the, I think, one of the great Floridians. In January, I got a call to join the Doge Initiative in Washington, DC with Elon.
Give me one minute, I'm sorry. Interim Chief, can we please, Chief Bush? Sorry, is this, we can hear it all the way up here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Continue.
So back in January, I had got a call on a Wednesday morning to move up to Washington, DC, to join Elon and the Doge Initiative. So I resigned that afternoon, and then moved up, moved up to Washington, where I participated and joined in the Doge effort, I myself. I'm proud to have several billions of dollars in cost savings to my name from the federal government. Following that work, I, along with some others, incubated at OpenAI, the leading AI company, thinking about how to bring some of the learnings that we have into an AI product that can be offered to other municipalities and so forth. And now with the support of the State Doge Program being introduced to various municipalities here, and that's sort of the context that I'm arriving here today. So we've built this platform that I'll demo in just a second here, that is really an AI forensic audit technology. So we work, we partner with municipalities from our own end, also enterprises and state governments, to identify efficiencies, opportunities for modernization, and ways to elevate and improve operations for all citizens. So happy even to just jump into what it is our platform really, really does. So if y'all are all able to see here. So one way to sort of think about it is any enterprise, any organization, a municipality, has all sorts of fragmented enterprise systems, HRIS, contract life management, CRM, and all the rest. What we're able to do is deploy an AI agent that sits on top of all of these various systems. And you're only able to do this today because of the nature and point that AIs reach today, where we can sort of unstructured, unstructured data, right? That is to say, historically, if you were to have your HRIS system speak with your CLM system, these two different systems be like apples to oranges. But what we're able to do is make them both apples, both oranges, or whatever, and really understand your organization in a holistic way to come up with these opportunities for efficiencies. So here is our platform, Echelon, Echelon OS, operating system. And I'll give you a quick run-through of what, among the things that we offer. So initially, in this knowledge base here, this is like a 3D map of your organization. This is where, again, based on these integrations and this AI layer on top of your fragmented system, you can let me know if I'm going too into weeds or not enough into the weeds, but we're able to basically build a 3D map of where people are spending time, where people are spending money, and what, where resources are being committed. And we extract from that your business objectives, the strategic priorities, basically, of a municipality. And then we map a dollar through the organization. Where's money coming in from, whether that's revenue, allocation? Which team is that being assigned to? Where is that money being spent? And is that money being spent on a strategic priority? Asking the first principles question, even if we have a contract, do we need that contract in the first place? Even if money is being spent, do we need that in the first place? Is it in service of a business objective? And then we put this all together here in our money center, where you map all of your various contracts. I'll pull here, you know, sort of this view is a demo. This view is from a real client who has said that we can, we can sort of share as part of our demos here. So every contract gets a baseball card, where we have a summary of that, of what that contract does. We pull alternative vendors, a cost, payments cadence, and all the rest. Business objectives, terms, how do you do on pricing? Do you have a duplicative contract or what have you? You can add all sorts of additional tracking as well in custom metrics for a contract, and then we make a recommendation for that, for that contract. Hey, you have a duplicative contract. Hey, there's 50% utilization. You can renegotiate terms. And because we have this full 360 review of every contract, we can also answer kind of secondary questions. So for instance, here, hey, this has very low utilization, but this has important reputational value for your organization that you have this contract. So really, this full 360 review of every contract, of every spend that you have through AI. And this is the type of work that one might spend really millions of dollars, having consultants come in and do manually. We can do it in one day and bring more data to bear than anybody else more effectively. In instances where we recommend renegotiation, for instance, we can actually give you the points of renegotiation for that contract. Again, this is like really, really cutting-edge AI, what we're able to bring together and the recommendations that we're able to bring to bear. We also additionally have these other views across people, for instance, where we understand, hey, here's your organization, and we built an org chart for you, and then answer, are people really spending time on the right things? We're able to look at where people's efforts are being put and ask, are they working really on a business objective? The other thing we're able to answer, among other questions, is how does AI play into your organization? There are a million AI tools, there are a million different ways people think about AI. What we can do is actually give you a bespoke plan for how AI fits into your organization, where each individual can utilize it. So for instance, in this case, a director of operations can use high-radius autonomous receivables for this particular use case. We show you exactly what AI tools fit for your organization, for your needs, again, because we have this whole 360 view of your organization. And answer, I think, one of the most pressing questions of every organization, where can AI fit for me? Again, this is really just, I mean, cutting-edge. Putting this together, we can actually track your progress on one of these plans, on a transformation plan. How are you doing against one of these plans, and why might you be missing a goal? And then simply hit refresh here to rebase line, significant pain point in executing a corporate transformation. And then we can also give you actually a step-by-step sequencing of any given plan, say that's signing a contract, or renegotiating a contract, or what have you. Kind of run through the rest here, because I know I'm coming up on time. Workbench is what folks have kind of thrown to various team members to look at. And in chat, you could pull anything that we have across your system, whether that's pricing and initiative, whether that's asking for financial forecasting, or understanding, hey, what are, what's the sort of background of a given contract, hire, et cetera. And then in our inbox view, this ends up being something very important, especially on an ongoing basis. This is an AI layer on top of your new incoming contracts, on top of your new incoming hires. So you could ensure, hey, you have AI spend controls. Say, for instance, we don't want to spend any more money on this particular initiative. Say we want to grow only this team and not that team. This can add that AI layer really on top as an automatic function. So that's just a very quick demo of some of our capabilities here. So kind of pulling that together, we offer visibility across operations, contracts, and resources for the whole of your organization, recommendations for cost savings, headcount planning, enforce spend controls, and contract compliance monitoring on an ongoing basis, a bespoke AI implementation roadmap plan, and continuous identifications for efficiencies. As opposed to other types of audits that are really manual and only able to bring a fraction of the data that we're able to bring to bear, we do all of this in a single day. In a single day, we deploy our AI agents, and not on, not in our network, but on your network, we don't see anything, it's totally up to you. You see it, and is a turnaround time in literally, literally a single day. Because we're able, because of our integrations, we're able to identify millions more in savings than any manual process, and do this in real time. In terms of even pricing, we were, we exist as an enterprise tool, and that's really where our customer base is, but have a partnership to offer a discounted at-cost, really at-cost price for public partnerships, that we were able to, you know, we're sort of doing in partnership with the State Doge Program. And then lastly, vis-à-vis pricing, anything is done on a performance basis, rather than, say, a project basis or anything like this that you'd get with consultants or any sort of other type of forensic audit. You know, you're not paying for warm bodies, you're paying just for software. So it's actually, you know, really just a fraction, a fraction of the price. So pulling that together, right, this is, you know, again, my background coming from the federal Doge here, and then through a partnership with the State Doge Program, just glad to be here and share a little bit more about Echelon, and hope to be able to help out here in Deltona.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
Thank you very much for coming and presenting to us. I appreciate that. I've got some questions that I've written down that have come up during your presentation. At the, a previous workshop, it was noted that this, you got, your organization thought that this was a good fit for Deltona.
Yep.
Can you explain why you think Deltona is a good fit for your solution?
Yep. And this was done, again, in partnership with the State Doge. Part of the thought was that this is sort of, as a, I suppose there are a couple of reasons. One is, as far as the size of the city, it's sort of a perfect size, that, you know, it's like, on the one hand, it is large enough, I think the budget's somewhere in the order of 400 million, that it's almost inevitable that there are opportunities for efficiencies. But on the other hand, it's sort of also the size where you could really wrangle those, right? It's not completely out of control and too large. And then I think that there's also like a deep faith in, you know, the commitment to fiscal responsibility from the leadership here.
Thank you for that. Are there any other agencies in Florida that are using this software yet?
Yep, so we're moving forward. Not sure what I can sort of share otherwise, but with, as far as other municipalities that we're sort of engaged with.
Do you have contacts with any other municipalities similar to in size?
But yeah, happy to follow up with them and then kind of connect with you, just to.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
In the presentation, you've mentioned a couple times that you guys are working in partnership with the state. So is this, would this be the State Doge coming in to Deltona, or would this be Deltona working with or contracting with you guys as a third party?
This would be contracting with us.
As a third party?
As a third party.
Okay. And then that cost that you identified as a shared cost, we'd be getting it essentially at the, your cost, right? What would, what would that be? And how do you, how do you bill based off of performance rather than project?
Yep. So as far as at-cost goes, right, like, it is a function of the data and our compute, right? So kind of looking at your, understanding basically, if I were to ballpark it, what that would look like, given the size of the municipality, kind of estimation of what data would look like based on comparables, it would be $300,000 for the technology itself, the infra-cost, service cost. And then as far as performance goes, what we have is up to $200,000 in cost savings found. If we find, you know, $20 million cost savings, not a crazy number, by the way, for 400 million, right? You think about how contracts can be adjusted, what, you know, kind of, we call them zombie contracts, zombie subscriptions, you know? You know, God bless, keep all those savings pays for itself, but we will capture up to $200,000. And then, you know, but that is say, performance, if we find nothing, never happened before, then, you know, we don't, we don't collect anything at the end. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it does. I appreciate that explanation. And that kind of leads me to another question. It appears then, based off of that, that your AI program is going to be specifically looking mostly at contracts. And how does it incorporate? And I don't know, I know that in the past, the city has been a late adopter to technology. And so having a lot of paper records and whatnot in the past, how does that play into your system? What's, you know, in terms of, you know, getting everything scanned in and computerized?
Yep. So that is say, like, if a set of contracts are literally only on paper?
Hard copies, yeah.
So kind of the beauty, so number one, it does need to, like, be on a computer?
Yes.
But, but what's kind of, like, the beautiful moment that we're in is, and our technology can read PDFs, can read scans. So it's not as if someone needs to sit there and enter a million things. You could literally take 5,000 pages, put it in a scanner, you know, and it zips through, and then we process all of that, understand the contracts, understand the data, know what to pull, and then can immediately structure it in the way that we're showing, give it these baseball cards, these ratings, recommendations, identify actually who's the best person of contact within the agency to handle something like this. You can email that person of contact related to that contract. And, you know, we understand who engages with each contract and so forth.
So this being contract-centric, is, is there any consideration given to operating budgets and efficiencies within operating budgets? Or is it just strictly contract-related?
What do you mean by that, like, looking at?
When it comes to looking at how we spend money that is outside of contracts?
Yeah.
So if it's, you know, if a human isn't analyzing an operation, they can look and say, we spend this much labor on these tasks.
Yep.
If we contracted that out, but we don't, but if we did, there could, you know, you could do it a little bit more efficiently, or, or just overall reviewing, maybe we spend just ballpark $100,000 on toilet paper because we buy it, every department buys it separately.
Yep.
You know, is that something that?
That is a classic use case. So that is, you know, I kind of use contracts as a catch-all. We call it our money center. We integrate with your spend, so we can actually even identify, hey, if there's an employee with, you know, you know, 100X the spend of everyone else flag, you know, we can understand if something like that's going on. Hey, you can, in a sense, there's also a way in which this enters like the GPO market, right? Hey, you've got all these duplicative contracts, hey, you should consolidate them. Hey, you only need one, something like that, or you're getting a bad price, whatever it is. So we identify all of that. That's like extremely classic use case, let's say.
How does it analyze, say, for your example, if an employee is, you know, the primary spender and spending exponentially more than somebody else, how does it know whether that employee, it's, you know, what the reason for that is?
Yep. So ultimately, right, like, our data is all based on our integrations. So one is, we can, if there's not enough information to answer the question, we will just flag it for you, and everything's human in the loop, right? The human makes every decision, but we will give you all the context that you need and all that that exists. But what we can do is, let's say, like, you know, if someone was like, I don't know, doing city business on their personal credit card and then had to reimburse it, if that's recorded anywhere digitally across your network, the AI will pick it up, right? So that's, for instance, what I was sharing about like this contract. I just kind of pull it up as an example, very low utilization, you know, price is okay, but it's important for reputational value. Folks were discussing an email and understanding an email, that it's important for the reputational value of the company, that they are kind of engaged in this particular contract. There were, it was, it was not, you know, to your point, technically a contract, they were a part of an association. So it picks that up.
I've got two more questions, and I promise I'll be done.
No, that's good.
So how, does it interface with our existing ERP solution?
Yep.
And you have examples, and it's been, it's interfaced with our ERP solution in other jurisdictions? And you have examples and it's been, it's interfaced with our ERP solution in other, other jurisdictions?
So what I can share, let me, let me put it this way. One of our most recent customers was a 100-year-old vacuum cleaner manufacturer in rural Michigan. If I ever thought I saw dirty data, or if you ever thought you saw dirty data, you know, welcome to this, this particular customer. So it's like, and we were able to turn that around literally in a day. That's part of the innovation here, the types of agents, the AI agents that we've built that can extract data. I can pretty much extract data for anything, even kind of from a technical sense. I don't need to kind of get into the details, so you can tell me to move on.
No, that's perfect. That's kind of so it can weed through those contaminated data lakes per se, or polluted data lakes and.
Exactly.
Intelligence.
Exactly.
And then the last question that I have is how does it, throughout that process, how does it determine what is waste versus what is maybe a quality of life project that the commission has approved or that, you know, it's something to that effect?
So that's that first page, why that, like the map page, page that I had showed, why that ends up being so important? Because that actually maps out what are the strategic objectives, strategic priorities, the city priorities, you know, the mission and so on, that everything should be mapped to, right? So any spend will be mapped onto a goal of the, of the city. And where we find instances that spend or people's time and resources are not mapping onto a priority, flag that for you. Hey, this is kind of wasteful, right? And again, just like for, for your review, but that, you know, kind of logic page of the map ends up being really important for that, where we've, you know, can identify, you know, in some cases 50, 60, depends on the organization, how many business objectives there are, or, you know, strategic priorities, political priorities. And then we'll see, see what kind of work towards those goals versus not.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer the question?
It does. It sounds like that's probably the, the area where we're going to have the largest gap because I don't know that those have been prioritized or documented out formally.
So what we do there is typically we'll like pull like, just, I mean, that's integration with documents that you have public and then in kind of like the drive or whatever, to understand, hey, what are people talking about? And what are y'all talking about, right? And what are, what are your priorities? And then we map to see to it. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Oh, 100%.
You Vice Mayor, Commissioner Eli Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming out here and giving us the presentation. So I'm, I'm listening to a lot of my questions you have seemed to, you know, answer currently. So you're, you're reviewing contracts.
So what we do, right, like is we integrate across your network, across your various enterprise systems. And then we ultimately understand contract, we kind of call it contracts, but it's really any money out the door. We review all of that money to see that it's, and I can sort of run through the various metrics that we track for, and you can add more, but we track that you're getting good pricing, you're getting good terms. You're not spending duplicates with duplicatively, what you're spending on has utilization, what you're spending on actually advances one of your priorities. So we, so we track all, all of that as well as for people, as well as for your, for your team to understand folks are spending time on strategic priorities as well. And then if not, it's like, hey, flag, you know, they should be, you know, spending time on X, Y, Z.
So I used to be a software analyst in helping develop software for tellers. We did what we used to call a mini audit in-house before the big auditors came in. And I'm just going back many years, so I'm just going to put it the way we did it and I want to compare it to how you, you, you know, you guys are doing it right now. So you have an expense.
Yep.
You turn in your report, you put the expense what you received together and that matches, but we also look at the policy. Is there a policy that says that you can spend this money on what you spend it on? Does, do you also do that? Or do you just look at the finance part of it?
Yep, that's also in there, right? Like ultimately, these questions end up being sort of big data questions and then how can you structure it accordingly? But we ensure that everything's compliant with, yep, spend, spend policy.
So I mean, because I can go out and spend money on anything I want, but am I allowed to do that, right? And it's all based on the policy of, of the city.
Yep.
In my case, it was the policy of the bank. So I was just wondering how, you know, how do you title that together if you're just looking at finance? But now you're telling me that you do look at policies as well.
So happy to kind of like run through the various integrations that we do, all of the data that we ingest. But one way to sort of think about it is kind of as a company, we're disrupting consulting work, the consulting industry with software. What has been done manually, we're just doing with now with AI. So you can do it, you know, you're not paying for the people, so it's cheaper, it's immediate, but it's exactly the same goals our, our background for many of us is in consulting, exactly that. So as we're finding with customers, it's like, oh, I could have brought in PWC or brought you in for, you know, a fraction of the cost and so on.
It's more or less exactly as a manual, automated, manual audit. It's just that now it's more automated, more sophisticated. And again, the question was already asked, but I wanted to find out, you know, if it's compatible to the equipment we have or do we have to spend money on bringing in a software like this?
So this is like the, the payment is for the software for that. It's, I guess the answer is like, it is compatible, but that's what you're paying for, like the agent that can, that can understand the data of all of these various systems and then format them and then make the recommendation. Does that answer the question? Maybe, maybe I'm not understanding it.
So we already have our soft, our hardware.
Yes.
Right? Can we, is that software, can we bring it in and make it work in our hardware? Do we have to go buy more equipment to make it work?
Sorry, I didn't understand the question. Yes, it's built for this. So it's an AI layer that sits on top of all of your systems.
Okay.
One of the issues that we find, right, is like, there's so many vendors out there that recommend like rip and replace, pull out, here's new software. We say you have your SAC, this will be as minimally disruptive as can be.
It'll be behind the scene.
Yep, it'll sort of, yep, this AI layer just on top of all the system and does a data extraction from all, you know, HRAS, ERP, CRM, email, whatever.
And do you train our IT department to work on it? Or do we always have to go to you for information and?
So we, we continue to have like, you know, service and so on. The intention is right, like there would actually be very, we just need like initial access, right? Like permission to the systems and then we hand it over to you. And then the UI should be like ready to go and pretty intuitive. I kind of walked through very quickly what that looks like. All of this, by the way, is exportable to Word, PDF, Excel, if that's just an easier way to, to work. We find for most folks, you know, they don't, so some folks like using the dashboard. Some folks want the insights and recommendations pulled out into a, you know, a PowerPoint or an Excel so they can send it around. But yeah, it's kind of, we hand it over to you and then it's, you know, like, I don't know, like Salesforce or Gmail or whatever, right? It's, it's a SaaS product.
Thank you. Appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yeah, most people, most, everybody here has already asked many of the questions I have, so I'm just going to have a quick question. Could you give us a number of the contracts you have with municipalities as, without naming names?
Let me, let me see what I, what I can share and then come back if that's all right. I just, because I don't know, that's sort of like the state Doge. You know, don't want to step on anyone's, anyone's toes, so to speak, but happy to follow up if that works.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Howington?
Thank you. Thank you for coming out and presenting tonight. So this sounds like, is there going to be some sort of like a data warehouse that would house all the parameters that we provide and things like that? So as it is going through and looking at our data, it's able to analyze what our expectations are? Is that kind of how it's going to hold the data and? How does it?
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out when we set the logic and the parameters, we're going to set goals and targets.
Yep.
And so.
So maybe.
How much data can it hold? Is it, does it have the ability to look at a budget and know that we've budgeted X amount of dollars in various funds, accounts, things like that? Can it monitor those or is it specifically project based?
Yep. So sort of in like this map page, right, where we have it marked as revenue? I think that would be best as like allocation from budget, right? That's more fitting to the, to a public sector partner. And then as far as contracts go, you know, you can sort of take a look at some of the various items that we track sort of as part of our typical process. So the pricing, what's the pricing for this duplicity? Whether it's advancing a strategic priority, business objective, or the terms like if it's business critical? But you can actually add those custom metrics as well, whether that's for the individual contract, for a team. Maybe that's just for whatever department or for the whole organization. So this is actually something that, you know, we sort of can hand over to you. And then very like the UI, I think is very intuitive, that you could sort of just add, I don't know, like, I don't know, like owner or whatever, right? And then you can track it across the, all of, all of your contracts and that'll come up in the same way that we have like business objectives, terms, business critical. You know, that new kind of tracker will, will pop up. Does, does that answer the question?
I think so. And so we actually, as a city, we can set those parameters. This is, this is our decision to make. This isn't somebody else making it on our behalf.
Totally. We hand it to you, all human in the loop, y'all are the boss of it.
And how does the licensing work? Because the way it sounds, if it's being handed over to us, it sounds like it's more of a perpetual license. Is that the case or is it subscription?
Yep, we have a yearly subscription.
So it's a yearly subscription?
Yep.
What's the annual cost on that?
Right. So again, it'll just depend on the size of the organization, but kind of looking into my understanding of a city of y'all's size, 300,000 for that.
Per year?
Yep. And then that, you know, continues to give the ongoing review of new hires, of new contracts, et cetera, to ensure that, you know, you don't need to bring in, you know, consultants every couple of years because you're staying, you know, your money's being, is money is being, you know, spent effectively, efficiently at all, at all times.
Okay. And I think that was the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Santiago? Is your mic not on?
Well, I can hear you anyhow.
It's, it's more for public.
Oh, gotcha.
All right, Commissioner, hold on. Gotcha.
Thank you. Oh, much better. Thank you. I was looking up your company and I couldn't find it. Can you tell me, are you licensed in the state of Florida, your business?
We're incorporated, our incorporate, we're incorporated in Delaware. That's our incorporation. And then we're headquartered in San Francisco. And that has to do with, you know, part of the, it's kind of the beating heart of AI, right? So that's like, you know, where the, where the talent that we're leveraging is.
Okay.
As far as license in the state of Florida. What do you mean? Like we're sort of, yeah.
You did say you partner with municipalities. Is it those municipalities in the state of Florida?
Yes. So.
Yes.
We don't have a particular license or maybe I should, for, maybe, maybe I'll love to understand a little bit more about the particular license that you're kind of asking about.
Just to do business and license, just go on the search for businesses in the state of Florida? And I can, I was putting it on there and I couldn't find it. I was just wondering.
We should be, our incorporation's Echelon Technologies Corporation.
Okay.
Maybe that OS was thrown in there at the, at the end, but Echelon Technologies Corporation.
And how long have you been in business, Echelon? How long has that been in business?
We've been, so literally a matter, literally a matter of months, right? We came out of the federal Doge effort.
And how long?
Sorry?
How long? How many years?
Oh, months.
Months. Okay. So you're new with, this is all new, all new stuff?
This is like a nudge.
Okay. And I, and you, you, you get back to us on how many contracts you have currently? Because you don't have that number right now, right?
Correct. Well, yes.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
I know AI is very, very new. And this audit is all new. But my question specifically is to our IT director who's sitting right here.
If you don't mind, Robert.
Right here.
Thank you very much. Please. Sorry to put you on the spot, Robert, but I just trying to understand AI is new. How do you, how will it compare to the city, like will it work with the, the city, what they have now? Can you give me your thoughts?
Well, this is a new way to actually approach a solution like this. So we would actually talk to the vendor and we've, and we really interview them and find out examples of how it's being used in other places and other entities. So right off the bat, there's, we have, our data is not just here in the city, it's also in the cloud. So it's not just integrations on premise, it's also integrations remotely. And then we have to have those vendors agree to release the data and analyze it as well. So it's not a simple solution. I'm not, I'm not really sure how the solution works. I can't really speak about whether we can or can't. But the, there's, it's very complicated how you communicate with, with a different vendor and different solutions. Internally, by itself, our on-premise solutions are both in a binary format and blob data as well as encrypted. So you'd have to go through encryption keys, you have to, there's quite a few hurdles you have to go through. So the, I'm not sure what the agent's going to look like. It's, it'd be very complicated. So it would be important that we know the type of solution, we can get an example or an, and a demo from another city or another entity. So references are very important in this case, including the, where the data is going to be stored. So if the data that they're going to generate is being sent to their, their, their cloud systems, where is it staying? Is it protected? Usually we request SOC 2 compliance reports to ensure the vendor has adequate security. Those takes, those can take years to generate to ensure that the vendors are secure, that they keep their data encrypted at rest and in transit. And that they're, they're, you know, they're hiring legitimate employees, if they're doing background checks. Those are the simple things that a SOC 2 compliance report requests from. So we want to be sure that we, we ensure our privacy for the citizens and the data that we have internally.
So it's a little bit more than just, hey, here's our entire budget. Go for it. It's, it's a little bit more technical than that.
Yeah. If it was just our budget, we have budget documents online. You can, you can probably pull analytics from the budget document all day long. It'd be wonderful. But it's more than that. If they're going to hit every single system, the question is what is that agent doing? What data is transmitting out and, and, and outside the city? That's, there's a, it's a lot more complicated. If it, if it wasn't, it'd be mad, to me, it's magic when it's something like that that just works.
Right? Wouldn't that be nice? Then we wouldn't have a job. No, just kidding.
Yeah, pretty much.
Thank you for the explanation. I think AI is just too new. I don't feel comfortable just handing it over to a company that's probably been here a few months, had just operated a few months and without other municipalities, knowing how the outcome has $300,000 a year is a bit, bit too much for that. But I appreciate your explaining that to us and that's all I have. Thank you.
So happy to share, happy to, as we've done with just last week, an IT manager of another municipality shared that tech architecture that we have to ensure that everyone feels comfortable with, with the safety. Kind of call it our lockbox, right? Kind of, oh, I don't need to get into the tech architectural here, but to ensure that it's, that it's safe. We're leveraging DELVE out of San Francisco to move forward with SOC 2. And then, yeah, safety number one priority, especially as we move to think about fed, federal clients as well, you know, FedRAMP, which is the ultimate, like most secure standard as well, built on AWS to ensure that, you know, where the cloud is as safe as the government's cloud. Then in each, yeah, kind of technological decision that we've had, it's been, safety has been number one because we are aware, no one's going to work with you if, if, if safety is not, not number one. So that's totally been, you know, like front and center for us since the beginning. You know, the tech, happy to chat more, but like if the technology decisions that we've made, AWS versus Vercel, et cetera, have been with safety in mind.
All right. I have a couple of questions myself. I'm all for AI, right? I, I get that it could be new and stuff. I look at cities like Altamont Springs. They're probably one of the leading cities in the country. They use AI for everything. I mean, literally, they're put up on all these national things. I think AI is the way of the future on some things, on some things, I think it's going to be the death of intelligence, but that's neither here nor there. I have some concerns when I hear things like. I have some concerns when I hear things like a simple question of how many clients, municipalities you have. If I look at my attorney right now, I say, Madam Attorney, how many clients you have without mentioning any names? I don't think anything legally restricts her from telling me.
So to, to be clear, I think that has more to do with like the political aspect of the state Doge. Right, that I'm working with the folks from the governor's office. So I don't know how like public they are with how many folks, like they want to use.
I mean, they're very public because Blaze has come out and said that it's very brand new technology and they're going to start working on it. I just have concerns because a couple of months into the business, we can't answer a simple, how many, how many municipalities? It's nothing against you. I mean, I, for goodness gracious, I was the one that initially mentioned it. Not with your company, company specifically, I wanted to see Doge. But those are just simple things that I think our residents want to know. And then obviously we talk about, you know, thankfully, some of the commissioners asked already software purchase, one time use, multiple times, and you've described it as a subscription, right? And I know this is a tough question to answer because you've only been in business a few months, but what would be the recommended, the recommendation on renewals? I mean, cause after a while, once you've quote unquote semi-Doge, because this is a different company, I don't know how to call it. I mean, is it efficient or even is it, is it profitable for the city to continue to use you guys? If we've already been Doge and we fight very little or whatever the case is, three hundred thousand dollars is not a little bit of money.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. And it's guess like, I gave up my life working in, in, in finance in Miami because I'm committed to the, to the notion of fiscal responsibility to, to taxpayer stewardship. So a hundred percent committed and appreciate, appreciate the size, the size of that number. And that just has to do with our compute, right? To actually like run the LLM costs money. So that's what that number has, has to do with. And you knew even as compared to our private sector customers, like that's, you know, this is at cost. Like that's literally just to, to, to run the compute.
I, I know it's, it's just, just to follow up on that. The reason I'm asking these things is, for example, uh, one of the creators, I think it was for ChatGPT, said that they spend, I forgot the percentage, so I'm not going to try to correct it. But it's a massive and normal amount of money just replying to the users, thank you.
Yeah.
From people saying, hey, can you say this? And then they give them the whole script and they're like, thank you. And then they respond, you're welcome.
Yep.
So, so that's what I'm trying to avoid is us having some type of redundancy with AI, right? That's why I look at, and I was hoping to hear you say that maybe you're working with Altamont, right? Uh, because they are such a leading city when it comes to AI technology. So that, I guess that helps with the question?
Yep, no, to, totally understand. It's the question of whether to renew the subscription, whether this works for you every year or this is just a one-off, kind of like bring in one, one type of audit. That, that's just up to y'all. You know, to your point, we don't, because we haven't been in business for many, many years. The technology hasn't been here for many, many years. We don't know if most folks will leverage this as, hey, we use this and we'll bring it in every five or six years to kind of review our contracts or whether it's, you know, like useful on an ongoing basis. What we can say is that folks have been very, um, like, so even, even take a step back, maybe this will help kind of as you think about, hey, where has this been used and so on? So on the private sector, sort of our go-to-market is as, is as follows. Right, private equity firms buy companies with a mandate for corporate transformation, cash positive, cash flow positive businesses, where they're looking to extend, to expand margins, to cut costs. So what they've been doing and where we've already had like tremendous success is deploy on one portfolio company. And they usually do a pilot, just kind of, and then they love it. And then they deploy across their whole portfolio. So that's where like already, you know, kind of really taken off. And I'm happy to, yeah, share, share numbers for those, shows references. I know kind of that was coming up, whether from, uh, IT folks who we've worked with. Happy to share references, happy to share references from business executives that have found this to be extremely successful in, in identifying efficiencies and, and, and saving money, et cetera. But yeah, as far, as far as the cost goes, definitely appreciate it. We have found time and time again, it pays for itself, right? In identifying, we call it the zombie contracts, right? You know, the zombie terms or whatever. So, but the question of whether you like subscribe year to year is, you know, a question.
I only got a couple of more questions. So how do you, how, how would you guys do an operational audit using your technology specifically? Cause I think that's probably where we can find some of the deficiencies is within operations. How, how, how would that work?
Yep.
Give me a ninth grader kind of version of what you're going to tell me.
Yeah, okay. So, so there are like a few different ways to kind of attack that. One of them is to think about, right, like as I talked about, like the AI implementation plan. So what we're able to do is understand actually what are the tasks of every given person in the employee base? Right? What does everyone actually do? And then we're able to say, okay, given their task, here's like the off-the-shelf AI agent that can augment that work and can help increase the efficiency. So for instance, say there's a team of 10 lawyers here. And they're absolutely like at capacity, but there's, you know, so much work. We can actually say, oh, given their workload, like here's Harvey AI. This is like the AI that's best fit for what they do. Let's say there's like a SDR team here. Well, hey, 11X is an agentic SDR. Hey, that, that, you know, you bring that in and that's, you know, kind of proven to increase efficiency by 50%. Here are the AI tools that actually fit for your organization. That's one way in which we just, I mean, really expand.
So it would help with recommendations on replacing maybe a tool or a person or a technology to make it more efficient?
We think about augmenting, like, hey, like your people are constrained. And, um, you know, we can sort of bring in these additional tools to increase, increase efficiencies and so on. So that's, that's kind of one way, one way to think about it. The other way is like, hey, you know, this, uh, this operation is using these 10 contracts. Actually, you only need five of them, whatever it is, right? Like this is not actually in service of, of the goal here.
Okay, that's more of the question that I wanted to answer. Security, right?
Yes.
That's probably one of the most important things. You're, you're working with government. Uh, obviously if you're doing business with the state, which I would still like to get information on some of your clientele.
Yep.
You know, that maybe you can't release publicly, but, uh, many of us can say we work with so-and-so, but doesn't mean it's actual factual. Not that I'm doubting you, but, uh, what I want, I don't want to see is be in the knees for a leakage for using a AI company. And all of a sudden, another AI company thinks it's Kyle, look, it's cute, let's hack them. Let's, let's see what we get.
Any amount that you don't want that to happen, I don't want that to happen anymore. Uh, but, but really again, like we are, um, building this like in a closed environment, like happy to run through all the tech architecture as we've done to ensure that it's, you know, up, uh, uh, you know, to y'all's preferences.
So I mean, I guess my question comes down to, because even our government can get hacked at any minute, right? Nobody's perfect. What, what, when it comes to securities, what type of liabilities do you guys have to protect this? Let's say you do get hacked, right? Cause you're not perfect. So you get hacked. What type of protections do you guys put in place? You know, like Equifax, when they get data breached, what they call it? They give everybody free credit monitoring for a year, whatever. What, what type of protections is what the question I was looking for?
So I guess there, there are, um, like what, um, so even, I, I hope this is not getting too much in the weed, but we're like built within AWS, right? So like our safety is like within kind of, right, which is owned by Amazon. The government uses them, you know, government cloud, right? Like the government, AWS for government, right? So we're like built on their cloud. So that we're like basically just like using their security protections, right? We don't really have to build our own. That's, you know, kind of what we're doing by building on their, on their cloud. Um, and calling APIs from other, um, parties that are appropriately credential, right? So like, um, right now we're going through, um, like three PAO for FedRAMP so that we could even be used for the federal government, which has to become FedRAMP approved. So that is the absolute most secure of any, um, standard in the world. So that's, that's, you know, really the standard that, that we, we hold ourselves to. And appreciate that, yep, it's, it's number one. As far as like what can be offered for, if there were to be an issue, happy to, I don't know that I have an answer at hand, but happy to work out whatever, whatever works. But again, like we're built on AWS, so kind of like in, in their cloud. So we leverage that, what, what they've built out.
Last question. Do you guys offer some type of a simple dashboard for residents to look at? In case, you know, let's say you audit gets done, whatever. A simple dashboard that can be implemented into our website where residents can go through.
I think that's fantastic. So one of the things that we did in federal Doge was we had, we called defend the spend, where we would show every expense. And then everyone who would, anyone who would like actually be spending that would write a description of why that was needed. And that's actually still public online. So I've always thought that the idea that you could have this on the municipality level would be really special. And this is kind of the way to do that. But yes, I mean, that's, that would be like super easy to do and can definitely, definitely do that. Let me also just super quickly just name on the, because like here it is like a repeated concern about like the other municipalities. I'll touch base with Eric Sawskin, who's the contact from the governor's office, who made the introduction here for me. And we'll just, yeah, touch base with him with what can be shared. Maybe put him in contact with you if that's best, um, for him to share about our, our involvement with, with the state Doge. And then I, I just don't want to step on his toes, you know what I mean? But can bring him into that conversation if that's helpful. And again, all of our tech architecture, happy to share references from other IT folks we've worked with, all of that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Harriet, then Commissioner Avila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate that discretion. If we were on the other end of this, I would absolutely want some consideration made. Uh, the mayor's last point that he brought up is, um, something that, one of the ones that I was going to bring up as well in terms of, uh, you know, sharing this publicly. What, what does that look like? It sounds like you guys have different thoughts and whatnot in mind. So that's, uh, there's definite possibilities for that to happen.
Totally. And that'd be super, super easy list from our end to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. And then the other, the other question I have is since AI is an emerging technology and there, the AI space is full of new coming companies, are there any other companies that are similar to what you guys do that are currently out there?
So one of the things that make us special is we're like a lightweight agent that can be deployed on top of like a legacy tech stack. So the, um, that's what other systems allow for, call it like Ramp, for instance, if y'all are familiar, is rip and replace, right? So that is where you really have to pull out your ERP system or your spend system and put in a whole new one. That's very high friction, that's very expensive. But we're the only one doing it with like the methodology of, hey, here's like a agent that can be deployed agnostic to the underlying system, can integrate basically with anything and then make these recommendations. So this is one of the ways in which we are unique, no one's doing anything like this. And built actually right out of the government use case for the government.
Thank you very much for that. And do we have his contact information? If you don't, we do, okay. Awesome. Thank you very much. I'd like to touch base after just to.
Totally. I don't stick around here as well if that's helpful.
I'll be honest with you, tonight's meeting is probably going to go for a little while, so I don't want to waste your evening.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question that I've heard, um, a comment during the other comments. So what you're saying is that, um, your system will interface with our system. And your system will follow the, um, security setup in the back that our system has. So in other words, our system will catch something that's not allowed and stop it on your side? You understand what I'm saying? So you have the programming?
Yeah.
And then you have the beautiful screen that's in front of you without seeing all the, you know, the programming in the back. And whatever I tap on, tap onto this beautiful screen, it talks to the back and then the, the security set in the back is what stops all the high, you know, hacking and stuff like that. Is that how your system is set up?
So taking a step back about like the architecture, um, right? So if you imagine.
In other words, you don't have a security setup. You go by our security setup?
No, so, um, we are, um, we have our security, right? Like we are built in the AWS, on the AWS cloud, right? So AWS is Amazon Web Services. So the vast majority of websites have their cloud in AWS. Even for instance, the US government has it, right? The government doesn't have their own cloud. It has it in Amazon's, Amazon's cloud. So we also leverage AWS. And then we have our LLMs, um, right? Like the recommendation models that then are sent. And those are not connected, that's not on the internet. That's not something that someone can log into. That's actually just like a code base, right? That then is run on the data that we've extracted from your systems, right? We can't see that, no one can even access that. It's not like this is live on the, on the internet, right? This is like a contained environment. And that's where the recommendations happen. So it's not even as if this is like someone can come and, can come and penetrate it, right? We do call APIs, um, but it's not like it's a, um, yeah, it's, it's not like it's a live environment on the internet that someone can just hack, hack into. It's, it's, it's kind of like technically contained, right?
Thank you.
That is, it, was that clear? Okay.
Commissioner Kowa?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about cost. So there's an initial cost to get you in here to deploy your programs. There's also a cost to deploy the agents in each particular department. Is that my understanding of it?
No, so it'll be like one, um, initial infra, infra cost. And that is, that, call it three hundred thousand dollars. And that, and then we also, put it this way, net-net five hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars for the infra, infra fee. And then up to two hundred thousand dollars, assuming we find at least two hundred thousand dollars in savings.
Okay. And then is there a cost to access our data annually?
So this is like a yearly subscription, right? A SaaS subscription. So we'd sell it for a year and you'd have this program for a year. And then it would be up to you whether you decide to renew it or not, um, to keep this ongoing function like on.
Thank you.
Like a Salesforce or something like that.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time and your presentation.
Okay, thank you all so very much. And please let me know if I can answer anything.
Thank you. All right, at this time we'll ask Catherine Barker to please come up for community events. And Ms. Barker, in your presentation, uh, just a reminder, if anybody wants to contact you to put any presentations up, could you please let them know how they can do it?
Okay, we have a few, we have a few more events coming up for this month. Uh, let's see, we have our movie in the park. That is this Friday night. We are showing Twisters, uh, from last year's version, 2024. Um, this was, uh, the movie we were supposed to, uh, play last month, but it got rained out. So, uh, we're going to try it again, uh, this Friday night. It's over at Campbell Park. Movie starts at seven forty-five approximately, or when it gets started. And as always, there's free popcorn and lemonade, uh, while supplies last. And when, then we have a ton of stuff going on on Saturday. So we're doing our annual storm drain markup event. Uh, we're doing our storm drain markup event. If you'd like to volunteer, you can reach out to Sonia Clay in our Public Works Department. Uh, they're going to meet up at the Del, parking lot of the Deltona Plaza at eight o'clock in the morning to do that. That's 1200 Deltona Boulevard. And then VMA, uh, they are doing their, uh, a car and motorcycle show. That is also Saturday from 11 AM to 5 PM. And this is to raise awareness for veterans suffering from PTSD. And this is also in the Deltona Plaza. And then Saturday, again, Saturday is, uh, this is a huge event, uh, that's being put on by the Hispanic Association, the annual Latin Fest. This is, event is a ton of fun, always a big turnout, live music, uh, food and drink vendors, dancing. It's just a ton of fun. That's 11 AM to 7 PM over at Dewey. And again, Saturday night, uh, uh, we've not had good luck with our concerts of late. Uh, there's been a lot of rain on the weekends. Frank Bang, the blues band that was supposed to play, uh, this past Saturday, they're going to try again, uh, this Saturday night. So go to Lan Fest, uh, and then go over to the, uh, to the amphitheater concert, free concerts. So go to Latin Fest and then go over to the, to the amphitheater concert, free concert, so ton of fun. 7:00 PM is the start for that show. And then this is a community event that I was alerted to, the Deltona Community Gardens, they are doing a fall festival and plant sale, and that's October 4th, and that's over at Van Park, 11, or 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And I wanted to mention a couple more October events because they're at the beginning of the month. We're doing another community shred day. These have been quite popular in the past, we've done a couple, but it's going to be October 11th, 9:00 AM to noon here at City Hall in the parking lot. Any old paperwork you don't need, you can bring it in and they will shred it for you right there. And then we are doing a, another spruce up Deltona that same weekend, both Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, we'll have dumpsters on Day Road behind the post office. You can bring things like large furniture, mattresses, yard waste, household items, things like that. We don't accept large appliances or hazardous materials, but that's just a good opportunity to clean up. And that's what we have going on over the next few weeks. But like the mayor said, if you have any events that you want residents to know about, contact me, I will share it. See Barker at deltonafl.gov.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. This time we're going to go into old business. If I can please have the city attorney read section 7A. Your, your mic's not on and she is, there's only two people up here, so. There you go. It's probably not charged, that's what probably it is.
Thank you so much.
Oh, very good.
You're going to want to have to share it with the city manager as well because his doesn't turn on.
You got it. All right. This is resolution number 2025-123. A resolution of the City of Deltona, Florida, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the amended and restated agreement with Waste Pro of Florida Incorporated for solid waste collection, disposal, and transportation services in accordance with RFP number 18021 and the exclusive commercial solid waste franchise, providing for implementation and an effective date.
At this time I'll entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Harriet, in a second.
I'd like to approve resolution number 2025-123, awarding an agreement between the City of Deltona and Waste Pro to provide solid waste collection services.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Harriet, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Santiago. Is there any public comment? Ms. Blodgett, can you please click on your microphone so I can turn you on?
The blue light? Okay. Okay. In January, Waste Pro gave us something that, gave us paperwork that it was going to be $22.83. That was in January. And in March, they came back to $23.01. Okay, that's 18 cents difference in two months, okay? Now, the city proposes $260 a year per person, per household. Does that cover the tipping charges and admin charges? And it looks like Waste Pro says that this includes recycling, which we don't do. So I just want some answers to these questions.
Dave Markle, Hanley Street. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As the previous woman just stated, January 30th of '25, we started to look at the contract. And then again, on March 6th, we looked at the contract again. And then in May of '25, it was moved to the city manager to negotiate. What I'd like to know is, why weren't bids open to shop around for rates? You know, any fiscally responsible commission would ensure that we're following the proper procedures when we're up for renewal for contracts. Additionally, as the lady just mentioned about the recycling, I think we need to look at our charter. Because in our charter, it says me as a resident have to provide a recycle day, a yard trash day, and a regular trash pickup. It also says that the city manager will provide information to the residents on the recycling program. So if this is true, why don't we have recycling? Also, the math is not mathing up. When you look at $1,594 a household for 12 months, that's $191.28, okay? But we're going to $260 a month. 4% of 191 is $7. There's a note in here about $600,000 in savings. Well, when you take the $23 that was given on March, the second time that we spoke with waste management, and you take that time to 36,000 residents, you get $250,000 of savings. So I think there's a lot of fluff in this contract along with the budget, but I think that we need to investigate this more. It's probably late now, but I don't understand why, time after time, we come down to the final month, four weeks, to make decisions that affect every resident that is moving people out of our city except for developers. It's ridiculous.
That is public comment.
Commissioner Howington.
Thank you. Yeah, I had just looked at the numbers as well, and the chart that we were given, it looks like as of October 1st of 2025, the annual cost will be 191.28, and then as of October of 2026, it would be 214.56, followed by 238.80 in the following year. So I'm not sure what the difference is. Am I looking at something that's not accurate? Because I'm quoting the same numbers that he had as well.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. I'm not really sure where those numbers are coming from. What's attached to the agenda item is what the, yeah, so the, the total monthly cost that was negotiated with Waste Pro was $1,594. So where the $600,000 number is coming from is that when we were told in March, a total annual assessment of 276.12, it's 276.12 minus 260 is $16.12 times 36,419 parcels. So that's where the total reduction in pricing is coming from.
I, I guess what's confusing me is that $1,594 for 12 months would be 191.28, so I don't.
But, but we have the $4.19 per parcel tipping fee, the $1.50 per month administration fee, which covers administrative staff and the additional IT allocate, all the allocations. So that's where we come up with the $216 annual assessment. So what's not, this, this agenda item only covers the Waste Pro component. It doesn't cover the, the tipping fee, which is a pass-through from Volusia County that the city pays directly, nor does it cover the city administrative fee of the $1.50.
And was there a third fee there that I missed? I heard the $4, the $1.50.
It's those three fees only. That adds up to 2163, times 12, which is $259.56. So with the collection of the monies that are out there, then that keeping it an even number is that will help to curb the increase that's next year, which has already been set in stone by Waste Pro, that they've guaranteed the rates for the next three years. And wait, the tipping fee from Volusia County will increase by the CPI index. That's, CPI of fuel adjustment will be determined by the adjustments as addressed in the contract, and both the increases are the same CPI indexed at Waste Pro, Redmond Consulting, and Volusia County are following. So it's universal across all three. And then to answer the question on the contract, the initial contract that we did in 2018 for Waste Pro allowed for a seven-year renewal. I don't have it up, but I can put it up, but except for the county, all the municipalities in this region use Waste Pro. It's economies of scale. We did look into based on what was done by a neighboring city, when they put their bid out, it's just no one else is coming into the area because Waste Pro has this region
Come back to me in a minute, because I have another question.
Commissioner Caldwell.
Yes, I believe Maritza asked last week if we could have a copy of last year's contract or the last contract and the current contract that we're negotiating. I don't think that's been provided to us. So, you know, it's hard to see what we're losing and what we're gaining. I understand that Mr. Redmond spoke to Waste Pro the following morning and was able to get some of the things put back in that we are lost. With that, I'd like for him to speak on this, is that possible?
There's not an issue with the commission, sure. Mr. Redmond, would you like to speak?
Mr. Redmond, I'm looking for, I want to be clear on what was added back in during the talks from the initial night we had a vote on it to table it.
Yes, sir. Bill Redmond with the Redmond Consulting Group. First of all, Mr. McKinney is correct in the tipping fee. The tipping fees from last year to this year went up by the county 4.8%, and that's totally out of your control, that's the county. What we did do, when we met with Ms. Hayes and Mr. McKinney, I stated based on the contract renewals and recent bids of municipalities in the area, to expect a rate of, in the range of 1662 to 1732, Waste Pro would be probably seeking. As it turned out, the city has been fortunate enough to negotiate a price somewhat under that estimated number, and the price of $1,594 for the first year. And you won't even reach what I had contended, what Waste Pro would be looking at till the second or third year. What we've added back in to the contract is the administrative charges. That is the teeth of the contract for compliance. And one of the issues that was brought up in the last meeting was the placement of the containers and how, after, after collection. That is actually a Waste Pro requirement that was put in place by Waste Pro Management previously due to the fact that we were receiving a tremendous amount of complaints from residents here about leaving the containers in the middle of the driveways, blocking the mailbox, and impeding mail delivery, and containers being blown over by passing traffic. Waste Pro Management implemented this requirement on their, on their collection crews to eliminate these complaints, and currently has required, acquired it in other contracts as well, has requested it. Mr. Dolan had made a statement that it was a $150 penalty, and it's not, it's a $25 penalty. And we, we make sure that they comply with that. But the way, but what we added back in, Commissioner, was the administrative charges that we originally had written in 2018, 2017. And like I say, that's the teeth of the contract for compliance. And you've got 37,600 residents here, and there's multiple opportunities for non-compliance. So I'll be happy to ask there any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Howington, I'm going to go back to you.
Thank you. One of my concerns is that this is a seven-year contract with three-year pricing. Now, would it make more sense to do a three-year with two, two-year options? Or, I mean, because it seems weird to sign a seven-year contract without a guarantee in pricing. Typically, that would be tied to CPI or something. So it does cause a little bit of concern to sign a seven-year contract without any sort of guarantees and that we're just locked into that.
Mayor, may I respond?
So the contractee is right behind you, so let him respond first and then we can go back to you, Mr. Redmond.
Ma'am, if.
Mr. Redmond, we're going to hear from them first, and then we'll go back to you.
There is a 5% CPI cap built into the agreement.
So that would be, so each year for the full seven years, it would not exceed the 5%, even if, so if CPI happened to be 7%, which we hope that would never happen.
Right. It would be capped at 5.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
My response, ma'am, is in our review, and with the contracts in the various municipalities that we deal with in Volusia, Flagler County, I believe if you would have gone out to the marketplace, you would not, your crew would not have been able to obtain the price that they did.
Thank you so much, Mr. Redmond. Is there any other questions on the dais? No, can we please vote? Motion passes 5 to 1. This time we're going to go to new bus, new business. 8, 8A, if I can please have the city attorney read the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number 2025-136. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deltona, Florida, relating to the provision of solid waste services, facilities, and programs in the City of Deltona. Reimposing solid waste assessments against benefited property for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025. Approving the assessment role, providing for application of assessment proceeds, providing for conflicts, severability, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Thank you. At this time I'll entertain a motion in a second before we begin discussion. Vice Mayor Harriet.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-136.
It's a motion by Vice Mayor Harriet, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Santiago. Is there any public comment? Okay. Is there any questions from the dais? All right, can we please vote? Motion passes 5 to 1. This time we'll go to section 8B as a boy, if I can please have the city attorney read the resolution, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution number 2025-135. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deltona, Florida, affirming the estimated assessment rates for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, for stormwater, street lighting, aquatic weed control, and nuisance abatement, providing for conflicts, severability, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Okay, at this time I'll entertain a motion, Vice Mayor Harriet.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to be very clear that the, the aquatic weed control is only for Lake McGarrett, I believe on this.
Yes.
So it's not what we have all discussed.
We know.
So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-135.
This is a motion by Vice Mayor Harriet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Santiago, is there any public comment? Oh, you went too far, Mr. Blodgett. If you can just push the button so I can turn you on. There you go.
Okay, just following through on stormwater.
Okay, just following through on stormwater. Kittens turn into cats, puppies turn into dogs, and floodwaters turn into sand hills. So let's not forget why we need the stormwater taxes to go up. Seem that we did a lot of catch-up last year. We need to forge ahead. We need to pump. We need to dredge. We need to open up those swales. We need to find a storage area where we can put a burrow pond and maybe then we can kill the swamp monster that lives here in Deltona. So I say vote yes. Bye. Have a good night. By the way, you look marvelous.
Thank you, Mr. Blodgett.
That ends public comment.
All right. Is there any questions from the dais? All right, can we please vote? Motion passes six to zero. This time we're going to go ahead and enter into the consent agenda item. Is there any, give me one minute. City Attorney first and then I'll go. No. Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
May I like to pull B?
B as a boy?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, is there any others that we need to pull? No? All right. Vice Mayor?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items A and C.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Harriet to approve consent agenda items A through C. Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Avila Vasquez. Is there any public comment on those consent agenda items? Okay. All right. Can we please go ahead if there's no questions on the dais? Can we please go ahead and vote? For A?
And C.
And C. Motion passes six to zero. At this time, I am going to give the floor to Commissioner Avila Vasquez. If you can just turn on your speaker, please. There you go. Regarding the request for approval and if I can please just have the city attorney read it out for the record.
This is a request for approval to suspend taking payment for animal licensing while staff and legal review Chapter 14 animals. And this is just while we do that work, which is that review of Chapter 14 of the code. The recommendation is to just suspend licensing collection of those fees while we're in review. But I'll turn it to Danny.
Thank you. Commissioner Avila Vasquez, before we turn it to Danny.
Yeah, so, okay, so you're saying is that we're no longer going to be giving out licenses or they can go somewhere else is what would be their option while we are working on this?
Good evening. Danny Ramco, compliance. Just for the evening tonight on this agenda, the item is just to suspend taking payments from the customers, from the residents on the animal licensing. This is, we are currently reviewing Chapter 14, which is the animal ordinance. One of the recommendations, I think the vice mayor couple workshops ago recommended maybe just eliminating the fees but still have the licensing. I think that's the route we want to take. But we, we, we're working with legal to kind of clean up Chapter 14, some suggestions. I think there's no state law when it comes to dangerous dogs. We are updating that information. And that's just the request tonight, just to spend, suspend taking payments to the residents on animal license. We will still issue them, but no payments. And that's all.
That was, that was my question.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, are you still going to issue them even though you're not requesting?
That is correct. We still an issue is just we would like to spend taking the money in.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda B, resolution, no, that's not it. Just the item B.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Avila Vasquez and a second by Vice Mayor Harriet. Before we go to a vote, I still have a couple of you on the board. Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes, can we, can we make this a time certain? Can we make this time certain?
How much time do you need? Mr. Ron?
We can't make this.
And we're going to bring this back in October. We already, oh, sorry.
Our goal is to bring it back for first reading in October. But we, I would prefer to give you a time certain next week if that's okay, just so we can make sure we get it all ready and advertised in time for first reading in October meeting.
Okay, that's special. Thank you.
Commissioner Howington?
So the intent at this time is to remove the fee going forward after the suspension? Is that kind of what we see happening?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. I actually like that idea. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harriet?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Caldwell's perspective. I do like the idea of doing it time certain, but we all know how this commission shuffles things around. So I just want to make sure that we're not handcuffing ourselves and putting us, getting us into a spot that, you know, we're running up and we have to rush an ordinance versus getting it done correctly.
Okay. Can we please vote? Motion passes six to zero. At this time, we're going to go ahead and go into ordinances and public hearings. If I can please have the city attorney read the public ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading of ordinance number 23-2025. An ordinance of the City of Deltona, Florida amending the general ordinances, Chapter 66, traffic and vehicles, to update regulations related to parking and vehicles, providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Is, this time I'll entertain a motion and a second. Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Yes, I make a motion to approve public hearing ordinance number 23-2025, amending the general ordinances, Chapter 66, traffic and vehicles, to update the regulations related to parking and vehicles at the second and final reading.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Harriet?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Avila Vasquez and a second by Vice Mayor Harriet. Is there any public comment?
Matthew Bergens, please.
Mr. Smith, can you please click on the mic so he can? Thank you so much.
Matthew Borgens, Deltona. Going through this tonight, I didn't know there was a first reading. I've been trying to pay attention for this. But I want to first wanted to point out that I live over, over by Tivoli and Saxon and there's a fire department over on Providence, maybe five, six minutes away if you're driving normally. I had a resident near me pass away. That was the first responder. It took six and a half minutes for fire rescues get there because they're weaving in and out of traffic. And you want to put, add three cars for the house to park on the sides and back. You did a YouTube video that says you went from that same fire department station down by the racetrack in four and a half minutes and using, using the Saxon. It was, it was on the, you had it on your, I think it was on Deltona channel, but it was like a YouTube video. It shows you riding with the fire department, but, but it took six, it took six and a half minutes to go from the, right there at that fire station to where I'm at. And it's, it's not even that far. So that's because they had weaving out of traffic and we want to start allow parking on the streets, parking everywhere else. This ordinance is saying that you want to increase from two to three parking on the streets because, for the side and back. And then you want to increase two to three for RVs and recreational vehicles. You want to allow, you know, all these other things going on. It's inconsistency because you're saying that you can't park in front of your yard and that you have to park on designated parking on your lot, but then you're allowing this extra parking. So there's no consistency in this chapter as well. And then we set aside for a committee to come together to do these ordinances and then we're reviewing them now. So there's a lot of different things going on that's not lying, aligning to what was told to the public. So, you know, there's a lot of things just going on that doesn't line for this section as, you know, for parking in Deltona. And then lining with the committee that was set up for reviewing ordinances. But there's a lot of things that need to be reviewed before it's passed because the terminology is not lining up. You put ADA on some of it, then you list as disabled. And then like I said, you're, you're adding two to three to add more parking on the road or more parking on the side of somebody's house. And, but then in another part of the same section, you're telling them that they can only park in designated areas that's allowed on the lot. And then you're having people who have three to four house, bedrooms have six or seven cars in their yard. And then we're having issues with code compliance and all this other things going on in Deltona. And you drive down Saxon, drive down other areas, and you see nothing but cars parked everywhere. So there's a lot of things I think needs to be reviewed before we approve it and get the final approval. Thank you.
That ends public comment.
Thank you. Jordan, if you can please come up and I know Commissioner Caldwell, you're on the mic.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. So for clarification, we're allowing a maximum of three vehicles may be parked in the side or rear yards. So that's for clarification. At the last City Commission meeting, Commissioner Caldwell asked about vehicles that were under 10,000 pounds. So we revised the ordinance to say smaller vehicles that have been substantially modified with equipment or attachments can have the same impact as larger commercial vehicles. These will not be regulated as if they exceed 10,000 pounds. Enforcement officers will use State David system or the vehicle's compliance label to confirm the weight, CDL requirements and registration. And then we also built in an ADA exception to ensure residents with accessibility needs are not penalized. Vehicles equipped with wheelchair lifts or other ADA devices are allowed to and do not count against the vehicle maximums. And those are the changes between first and second reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Caldwell. You were first and then Commissioner Avila Vasquez.
I have a question and referring to his question there as far as parking in the side yard of three vehicles. What do we do on a corner lot is when you're parking the side, what is designated as the side? You're on a corner lot, you're on two adjacent streets.
So on a corner lot, you would essentially have two.
Parking behind the house?
It would be behind the house.
Okay. In the 10,000 pound ground weight, does that include box trucks?
Now, we're using the database, what Florida State uses is the drivers of vehicles information database. And that will provide us the vehicle gross weight on that vehicle. And that's how we would determine if it's a commercial vehicle. You know, with, when it comes to box trucks, we also got to look at the height, the length from front to rear, and the weight. And it all falls in what category as a commercial vehicle.
What are those parameters just?
Well, if it's under the 10 feet, under 10,000 pounds, we do allow them on the property as long as it's properly parked behind the front face of the house. Anything over 10,000 pounds, we will not allow in the residential area at all.
And just, I'm going to clear up. When we say three vehicles parked on the property in the back or the rear, that would include a vehicle, a boat, and a camper?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. So Jordan, when, when we say, going back to the question, when we say the three allow vehicles, we're not saying that they're allowed to park on the right of way and we're not saying they're allowed to park on the streets. They're parking on their property in a section that's identified, like the side of their house. Am I correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Because I can say from the gentleman's comment, I have to go through Tivoli to go home. And I can tell you that while I'm driving home at night, there's no room available on the right of ways on Tivoli. So I'm thinking that maybe that's the problem that we're having, that there's too many cars parked on the right of way on Tivoli. And I don't know if the new chief can answer my question, but are we, are we still having problems on the turn on Tivoli with the fire trucks or was that, that was fixed? Remember when they first put the, the medium?
Yeah, they accidentally put a pole there. They took it down.
They took it down.
They also, they also took the center median in a little bit so that there was a turn radius.
So that's not the cause of?
No.
Delaying anything?
No. It's time of day is really the biggest thing. School zones, traffic that's on, at the intersection, time of lights that are activated. So, but the cars do get in the way at times everywhere in the city.
Yes, okay. I, that's the first thing I thought about because I know when they first put the, that middle part, I mean, the trucks had to drive a little further down to make that turn to go around the area. So, but thank you for your response and Jordan, thank you. And Danny, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for, I think, Danny. This will prevent people from parking on the right of way, correct? So you'll be?
Correct. We are eliminating parking in the right of way.
So how will you, so if you see somebody parking there, what they'll, they'll get a, what, tell me the process that you're going to?
We're initially going to start promoting it, letting everybody know it's, it's a big change when it comes to parking because we do allow them currently. You know, no more than two days within the seven-day period, you know, as long as they, you know, traveling, parked in the direction of traffic and all that. So we will put out there campaigning and let them know, hey, this is a new ordinance and we need, we need to make, get this corrected. I would, depending on the commission, how long that will take, I'm thinking maybe 30 days and after that we'll start doing enforcement actions on the right of way parking.
Okay. I just don't agree with the right of way parking, giving somebody a ticket and then, I guess, come back because there are people, we have residents here that have family. And how can you differentiate someone from visiting their parents or their kids coming and parking on the right of way? I just think this is excessive. I really think that we're going to come back and change it. We are, I do believe that this is not, I just don't agree with it. I just don't know how you're going to handle over 100,000 residents here in Deltona parking in the right of way. So, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to talk from experience. I don't think we're stopping people from using the right of way to a certain length of time. But I can tell you that what's underneath that right of way are pipes, electrical wiring, cable wiring. That was underneath that. And I can tell you that one morning I woke up and from my house up at the hill, I heard a gush of water. And when I went downstairs, my street is called Waterfall. I literally had a waterfall on my street. I don't know how much the city spent to repipe that whole round circle. And what we found was a dumpster that was put on the other side of the circle. I don't know how long it's been there, but that, that part is, there's a stream underneath. Am I correct, Danny? There's a stream underneath of the side of my property? And that dumpster just kept sinking, sinking and sinking for the long time that it was there. That's what caused the water main bright, pipe. And it cost the city a lot of money to fix that. So I don't think the city is saying you can't park on the right of way. And maybe, you know, family's over a day or two, but I can tell you that when I first got elected, my first ride along was with Danny. And Danny said that car's been parked there too long. And I said, how do you know? He said, look at the tires. They're sunk on the road. So if you ever see a car on the right of way and you think that, oh, they've been there a day, look at the tires, like Danny said to me, and you'll know how long they've been there by how into the dirt that the tires are. So, you know, we just have to protect. I don't think we're restricting anybody from parking on the right of way, but I think we have to watch out because there's a lot of water main breaks that, you know, a lot of piping and wiring that are being affected by that. Thank you, Danny.
I think, Danny, for clarity, we are talking about restricting parking on the right of way, correct?
Yes.
That's what this law is. That's it.
The right of way.
We are eliminating parking in the right of way.
Yeah, under a different ordinance, yes.
They're different or this?
It's in this chapter, correct. This is the chapter that's up.
Okay.
Danny, before we go to a vote and Commissioner Caldwell, I'll come to you right now. Can we just clarify visitors?
We will take consideration.
I just want to make sure, I read it, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, we'll take consideration when there is, most of the times on the weekends, gatherings. We can tell the difference. It's, it's also protecting our stormwater system, the right of way. That's where our stormwater is supposed to be going.
As long as we educate residents, that's really all I care. Commissioner Caldwell, please go ahead.
I must add the button hit, but to Maritza's point, I hope the resident with the dumpster, that damn just thing was charged for the repairs.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that we do have a lot of issues with this across the city and, and it's not the issue with people parking on the right of way and, and being active and coming and visiting and going. It's, in my district, we have a lot of people that are, I don't want to say abandoned, but that's borderline their vehicles been abandoned on the right of way where the grass is dead and it's, it's now becoming an issue with stormwater eroding away the right of way. Yeah.
Okay. No further discussion, can we please vote? Motion passes four to two. At this time, we're going to go ahead and go into section, action items, 11A. If I can please have the city attorney read the action item, and we'll go directly to Commissioner Howington because it is her appointment.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Before we move on, I just want to clarify on the last ordinance. So one of you made a comment that you want the residents to be updated? Can you just give us a little clarity what your vision for that is?
I said I wanted to, I want to make sure we're educating the residents on, for example, if they're there for two days, great, third day, you're going to get some type of citation. That's what I mean. It's educating the residents.
Or you might, we might not even catch it the third day, but maybe at some point. It's not that we're going to catch it on the third day, it's that we have the ability to catch it, and if we do catch it, then this is what the ordinance says. So you might get away with it for however long, but this is the new ordinance. And I, to staff's point, I think they're, they've already acknowledged that there's going to be a public information campaign on this, which I think is absolutely critical.
Just really quick, it will state in? It will state in the ordinance if there's like, let's say, a party at a house and they're parking on the right of way, it will state that that will be?
There is language about that. Mr. Ron, if we could get you back here.
If we can have those conversations outside too, because it's kind of tough, we're having multiple discussions in the, inside the chambers, we really only need to have one. I believe they have a question for you. I believe the city attorney has a question for you.
Does the chapter include the parties, cars parked there? Or we're just using our own opinion in the end?
Can you click on the podium, please? Everybody's clicking on the button. We already voted on this, let's not make it a thing, let's get a simple answer, and then we'll go to Caldwell because he's been waiting for a while, and then Commissioner Howington, let's give her the dignity because she's up next, so let's try to move forward, okay?
Yeah, we want to be clear, that is not in this ordinance. It does not have a definition about parties, it does not talk about parties. That is not a portion of this. We had talked with staff, they're going to do a 30-day implementation period and a public information campaign, and during the 30 days, they'll only issue notices, not citations, but after that, they will move to citations.
As long as it's in there, we can add it on there.
Commissioner Caldwell, I saw you've been on for a bit, so.
I just want to clarify your question.
Hold on, get me.
I just wanted to clarify your question that, you know, the people will be noticed for at least 30 days before anything's implemented.
That's correct.
All right. That was it.
Okay. Perfect. So let's go ahead and let's move forward. City Attorney, you were going to read the action item, please.
Yes.
Again, I'm so sorry, I just want to close the loop back on this ordinance. So you all moved it and passed it at second reading, so it's been adopted.
Correct.
However, it sounds like you want there to be language about party. No, you do not. So you're fine with it as drafted, since it's not defined.
My comment, I was the one that made the comment, was make sure we educate our residents.
Very good.
That, we have a bad habit, we pass ordinances and then the residents surprise, you know, I get, not knowing something does not exempt you from the law, but I just, doesn't take much to go on social media or on our website and just educate our residents. So if you can please read the action item.
Before we, one thing, Mayor, just want to clarify, Dan, if you can come up for a second. What is the rule on vehicles that we have? Because we've gone around this for some time. So we ticket a vehicle, the vehicle moves, how many days do they have to move? The ticket gets thrown out, three days later, they park in the same spot, we ticket them, the car moves, the infraction's corrected, there is no bill, right? Ticket, two days later, they park, it's, vehicles move. So how do we? Do we have a rule that's third offense, fourth offense, or is it every time they move?
It, depending on?
By state law?
I know in our fee schedules, I find schedules, it does multiply, the first offense is $50, second one is $100, and it goes up like that. Of course, it has to be ruled in front of a judge, you know, guilty the first time. If not, we're going to repeat in 50, 50, 50, 50 until we actually get a judgment from a judge on a guilty verdict, when it comes to that.
But if we warn them and they move the vehicle, the next infraction starts over again.
That's correct.
There is no automatic step up.
This ordinance changes everything on this policy. This is an entirely new way of doing things. There is, that way, that old way is gone. It is absolutely prohibited. There is no time limit. And there is an escalating schedule that's accurate, but there is no three days and then you get it waived, that is gone. This replaces that, it is absolutely prohibited, full stop.
That's been an issue with staff.
Yeah. Thank you. Can you please read that?
That was an issue with staff in the past, we're good then, thank you.
Thank you for indulging us, we just want to make sure we enact your will, so thank you very much. This is action item 11A, consideration of appointments to the Planning and Zoning Board. And I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Howington.
Commissioner Howington, your mic is on.
Thank you. I move to appoint the following member to the Planning and Zoning Board for a term to expire on March 15th, 2026, Larry French.
There's a motion by Commissioner Howington, is there a second? Commissioner Caldwell? There's a second by Commissioner Caldwell. Is there any public comment? All right, can we please go ahead and vote? Motion passes six to zero. And city attorney, do, hold on. We have to pick an alternative. Would that have to be done today?
We'd prefer it done today.
We can wait till we have seven.
You could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go ahead and wait till we have seven on the dais. All right.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go ahead and move forward. City Attorney, any comments?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I know that we've had a lot going on lately, so we appreciate all y'all for the good work and service that you give to the city. And we wanted to just give you a very brief update about the litigation in the Senate Bill 180 matter. I did reach out and connected with Jamie Cole at Wyserota, and they're, they're the firm that the city has contracted with to lead this litigation. There are two counties at least at the moment, and a good amount of other cities that have joined. They do plan to file in Leon County in about a week, so it's going to be in or around September 22nd, and we just wanted to keep you all posted. Once it's filed, we'll, we'll send you all a copy, so you have it for your file, and are happy to answer any questions ongoing.
Thank you. City Manager, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick ones, just want to congratulate the Fire Chief, key to the city, is a great thing for him. Overall, the best words you could say about the Fire Chief Snyder is he's a good man, just overall, just a good, solid guy. He did let me know that he tried to key on every door in City Hall, and apparently it doesn't work. The other is just Monday night's meeting, September 22nd, remind, very important for citizens and the commission alike, it will be the District Six Position Discussion, as well as the second reading of the budget, that'll be this Monday coming up, September 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we're going to go to City Commission, comments, requests, and reports, we'll start with Commissioner Santiago.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, just a reminder, the Latin Festival is this Saturday at Dewey-Boster, beginning at 11:00 a.m., lots of music, cultural food, beautiful event, Kid Zone, performances. So come on out, love to see you all there. I also wanted to thank the mayor for having the Charlie Kirk prayer vigil at City Hall yesterday, was just a beautiful event. We had over seven pastors, I believe, from the areas just come, and it really, I thank the citizens that came out, it was very well attended, and I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor for doing that. Thanks, that's all I have.
Commissioner Avila-Vazquez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would have attended, I wasn't invited. So I also want to give a big shout out to the Festival of Nations that was held Saturday. What an amazing event. We had 10 groups performing from different countries, 27 dances altogether, and it was amazing. But it couldn't have been done without the help of city staff. Our PIO, our Parks and Recs, our Deltona Fire Department were awesome, they were all on hand to make sure that this event took a nice start and a nice ending. I mean, it was a good turnout, food truck vendors and stuff like that. And I know we promoted as Hispanic Heritage Month, but I can tell you that in South American countries, it's called El Mes de la Raza, which means the month of the race. So in our event, we were promoting different races, and it was beautiful, China, I know Mark, I don't know if he's here, Mark from Parks and Recs, he was in love with the Chinese dancers. So hopefully next year, we can, we can do it again. I also want to, once again, promote the VIMA fundraiser, which is the PTSD fundraiser, it's at Deltona Plaza. And I don't know how I'm going to do this, but I have to run over to the Sons and Daughters of Italy that are doing the St. Gennaro's Festival for the first time here in the city of Deltona, they're on Doyle, it's free to the community, unfortunately, they're sold out on the buffet, but if you want to go, hang out with us, and just listen to beautiful, dance to beautiful old music, not that we're old, we just like oldies, you know, everybody's welcome to attend. So thank you so much, thank you, the city, for giving us the opportunity to do such a beautiful, bring back such a beautiful event that we had. You know what the beauty of it was? That most of the dancers were kids, they were young adults, and that's so beautiful that they're able to share different culture and stuff with the audience. We even had the, God, I hope I pronounced it right, Muskagi? The Muskabi, Florida Native Indians here performing as well. That was a big hit. So thank you, everyone who attended, thank you, everyone for being here tonight, and get home safe.
Commissioner Howington?
Thank you. You know, Commissioner Avila-Vazquez, you thanked everybody, but you deserve a thank you because that was your event and you did an excellent job bringing that to the city. Sorry. Which brings me to my next topic. I just wanted to make one more plea to everybody here. I know I've been on a kick for rollback, we've got a lot of challenges this year, and I'm very hopeful that we could come up with some ideas to bring the idea of a rollback forward this year. I'm still concerned, we are charging taxpayers way too much on the litigation fees, I'd like to see that drop down to about $300,000, that would be a savings of $700,000. That would get us to almost a full rollback, which if I'm calculating right, we're about point one, or 1.5 mils over, which is, or 0.15, which is 854,000, so that puts us almost there. However, you know, per GAAP, I know everybody's talking about our financial audits and how we follow GAAP. GAAP does not require us to collect these funds, so I think it is fiscally responsible to reduce the amount, given that we don't know what an SB 180 lawsuit is going to cost. However, I know some people have angst about that, and so with that said, I would like to look at some of my park funds for my district. I've spoken to some of my residents that actually use a park, are littler residents, and I've, I have an idea of where we could potentially roll back, and with that, we can focus on getting the stormwater lake mitigation, as well as maybe spread some funds out across a couple different parks rather than just one, and get us to a full rollback. But I don't know if the commission would be willing to work on that option. I think it's very important that we hear our residents, they've been asking for a full rollback for years, and I'm coming to the table with an option to get us there, but I guess it just depends on everybody else's thoughts on that. It does not impact anybody else's districts, other than it helps the residents. So I just wanted to ask, I don't know if we can take a consensus, or if you guys just want to think about it, and we can talk about it.
I think that would be, we'll go to City Attorney, I think that would be more appropriate for budget on Monday.
Happy to wait for budget, but I will tell you, we're hap, I mean, obviously, estimates are estimates, and money in a budget is fungible, so I think it's perfectly reasonable to reduce that substantively, and, you know, if litigation comes in, we know, we are served with it, and we have 20 days or 30 days to respond. So we have some latitude, and we'll obviously bring it back to you all, and if we need to make recommendations throughout the year, we can, but I certainly see the wisdom of being conservative, and certainly we would not, a million dollars is a substantive number, and we may never, ever even get close to that. So again, an estimate is an estimate for a reason, and certainly that's at the very high end of the range. So I think the low end of the range is more than reasonable.
And with that said, I mean, there is GAAP guidance, our codification specifically says you need to be able to reasonably create an estimate. We don't have any reasonable basis for this at this point. And then with that, it also has to be probable that we would end up having to pay out, and at this time, our guidance has not been indicative of a probable payout. So that's also one of my reasons, but I don't think that it's in our best interest to just wipe it out and not, not have anything to reflect the potential cost.
So Commissioner, I don't think it's a great idea, I would actually support that, but I would, I would plead with you that we do it during the budget when the residents are here so they can actually comment on that.
That's fine, I just wanted to float it, I didn't want to wait and hit everybody with it at the last minute.
And I appreciate that.
People can digest it and think about what options we might have, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes, I'm going to read from an email that was sent to me and a request to ask certain questions in regards to our lean department being dissolved and outsourced. This person and myself is looking for justification for outsourcing this department, the process and timeline that led to this elimination of this position, and the measures of?
Commissioner Caldwell, we can't hear, I'm so sorry, we just can't hear you.
Justification for outsourcing this department at this time, the process and timeline that led to this elimination of these positions, and the measures, if any, taken to ensure no retaliatory action was directed towards an employee. With that, I'm going to add, how many positions did we lose when we dissolved the lean department?
There is no dissolving of the lean department. We've been talking about going to the internet-based lean program back, probably August of last year, a year ago. So for your questions, we could put a report together to explain everything, including all the cost savings.
Okay. So you'll include the cost in that? Because that was my next question.
There is no cost for the company, it's the cost of the person at the home that wants to do a lean, it's a $10 service charge, so there's actually no additional cost to the city.
All right. I'd like to get a report on all the fines and liens that we have out there right now.
Vice Mayor wants it for each district.
And in particular, I'm looking for one which was requested for Harmony Medical, I would like the, what that was from inception to where we're at today with that, for both And back to my other question, how many positions were eliminated? And would we better use those, putting them back into code enforcement?
I don't have that information right now, and I'd rather not talk publicly about employee positions, but we can discuss that in the report that we'll put together for you.
Thank you.
You're good, okay. Vice Mayor Harriet?
Thank you, Mayor. Maritza, thank you very much for your dedication to the Festival of Nations. I heard from a lot of people, not just up here tonight, but a lot of our neighbors, that that event went off without a hitch and was very, very much appreciated that it has returned. Also, Mayor, thank you for the event that you championed last night, wasn't able to attend, but regretfully.
Uh, wasn't able to attend, but regret, regretfully so. I saw it on Facebook. I wasn't formally invited, but I did see it on Facebook. Commissioner Howington, thank you for bringing that option to the board, to the commission. I think it's worth, worth looking at. I also think that there's a lot to be, there's a lot that are, a lot of unknowns when it comes to, uh, SB 180. We know that there's going to be a cost involved. But trying to, or taking out, uh, that much and saying that it's, you know, we're gonna do this to get to rollback, I think, is not the responsible thing to do. But I would propose that rather than identifying that for those specific legal fees, that we budget that in reserves so that at future point, when we know more, we have that available, uh, to come back to the commission, uh, for discussion and a budget amendment. After that, I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, just a quick clarification. I didn't invite anybody on the dais, cause I, I just posted on social media, so, for the, the prayer vigil. I just have literally one thing. So we had, uh, one of our schools in District One, Friendship Elementary, was broken into by two middle school students. They've been caught. The school sustained around $50,000 worth of damages. So, um, you know, they're putting together a list, an Amazon wishlist. Uh, I spoke to Ruben, who please, uh, keep him in your prayers. He's, he's in the hospital. Uh, it's not my place to say what for, but, uh, he's, he's been in the hospital since, since Friday. But the school's gonna go ahead and do the gutting and remodeling of that media center. For those of us that obviously were not elementary school, we remember that element, the media center as an elementary student was the place to go. That was where you went to kinda let your mind go out there and think about the AI stuff and how you can create it and, and cool things like that. So, uh, keep an eye out for that. Let's, as a community, come together and, uh, help, help this school. I, I got there, the media person was crying. Um, it's, it's really, it was really bad. Uh, I, I don't know why on earth these kids would do that. So, uh, let's just, uh, come together as a community, help them out. Maritza, congratulations on your VIMA jacket.
Oh, thank you.
And you wore it through the whole commission meeting, so. Anyways, that's, that's, that's all I have. Um, finally, there's some weird allergy or flu going around. I know my youngest daughter has been sick for a couple of days. So just, uh, make sure you take your vitamin C. Everybody have a good night, meetings adjourned.